Township manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So the board meets this evening under a business session of the Board of Supervisors. They have a number of items to discuss and to act upon. Items to include under new business, action to adopt Resolution 22-16, which designates the signatory for federally funded PennDOT projects. Next, the board will take action to adopt the policy and procedure for consultant selection relating to federally funded PennDOT projects. After this, the board will take action on a number of subdivision and land development items to include approval of the Cider Press master plan. And also, action on ordinance 21-03, which amends Chapter 203 of the codified ordinances permitting conveyorized car washes within the RRD zoning district. And finally, the board will take action on improvement guarantees and the payment of authority and township bills. And after that, they will hear any final announcements before taking action to adjourn the meeting. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Call this meeting the lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. We'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Lindsey will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will begin by going to approval of minutes. Do we have minutes? I don't see any particular date listed here.
Yeah, reorganization from January 3rd.
Yes.
Okay. It's not listed on the... Okay. So it's reorganizational meeting from January 3rd. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I have a point of clarification on those minutes.
Yes.
Page three, appointment of the township engineer. Says Mr. Blaine called for a voice vote. A unanimous vote followed. I don't believe Mr. Blaine was in that meeting.
Sir, this, these, for the reorganization meeting, for the, this is now actually for the authority. Wait.
No, it can't be. These are our Board of Supervisors.
This might be...
Yeah.
It was the appointment of the township engineer. Mrs. Lindsey opened the nominations for the appointment of the township engineer. Mr. Judd made a motion to appoint HRG as the township engineer. Mrs. Lindsey seconded the motion. Mr. Blaine called for a voice vote.
Should've been Mr. Henry.
I see. That's a...
Should've just been Mr. Henry.
I think.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay.
Good.
Sounds good to me.
I actually read this stuff.
So there, okay. So now there are the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion, Chairman, to approve the minutes as corrected for the January 3rd, 2022 reorganization and business meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session prior to this meeting, and will be doing so following the meeting to discuss some personnel matters. Now is the time for public comment. If you would like to comment on an item not on the agenda, this would be the time for that. If you're here to comment on an agenda item, that opportunity will be available to you at that time. Anybody like to talk on a matter not on the agenda? If you would please come to the podium, sir, and give us your name and address. Whoop, careful. Good evening.
I'm Alvin Taylor. I live on 1062 Accra Drive, right off of Union Deposit Road in the cul-de-sac, one of the Twin Lakes borders my home. I'm here tonight, Chairman Lomond Henry and the other supervisors. And because of a situation, I only have a few copies that I would like for you to consider. It looks expensive making a run. Can I give them to you?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let him give them out to the...
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you.
Top one is yours.
Okay, thank you.
If I could read the, the letter that is...
There's a lot of...
If I could just read the letter, and you guys can look over the packet of information at your leisure, and then give me a response, a written response, I'd appreciate it.
Could you just summarize the letter rather than read it verbatim?
Yes, sir. I can do it.
Because we can, we can read it.
That'd work. What happened, um, I had been remodeling the, my home there in the cul-de-sac. I moved down there in 1987 and purchased it in 1990 and started remodeling it. One of the reasons I remodeled and bought the property, it's a V-shaped, one of the larger properties there. But there were children down on the pond that were ice skating, and it was frozen on this end and water on that end. And it just haunted me if something would happen. But I have been working to remodel my home, and I'm down to the last part of it now. Last year, I, I met with the gentleman, Mr. Weaver, and he did a site visit my house for the last part of the house, the 22 by 22, uh, single-story garage that would be attached to the addition that was already built. And he came out last year, and he said, "I don't see a problem with it. I was going to be built." And so, after speaking and meeting with him, and he came out there, we did a, a survey, with Romano Survey, and they came out in September. And so, we didn't get to work on it last year because of COVID and another project. And so, this year, we started early. My wife and I married. And so, I brought all the paperwork in, and, and I paid the fee, and I did all the paperwork for the permit. And when I came in after a while, after the check had cleared and things like that, I wanted to find out the status of the permit. And, and talking with Ms. Zerby, Amanda Zerby, she said, "Oh, it's been approved, we just haven't mailed it out to you." And I said, "That's fine." And so, we had email exchanges, and she wanted to know off the, the house, how much, because it's pie-shaped, how much did I have between the, where the house was sitting and the, the border, the property line? And I told her it was nine at the top and 18 down near at the bottom. And so, the next thing I received, to make a long story short, from Mr. Randy Weaver, I believe it's not Weaver, the gentleman came out, he came out and he said, "Well, I looked at the property, and I'll get back to you." And he got back to me, and he said, "Well, you know, we decided we wouldn't give you the permit." And I was stunned. And I have pictures of everything there, and what I would ask the board to do is to reconsider it. If you see this property, there's nothing down there. There's nothing ever be down there. He says, "Well, it's the sewer." Well, when I first did the redevelopment of the area, we bought in 2,700 tons of, of fiddle dirt from Tristan off Union Deposit, because it was such a steep incline down to the pond, and it was part of the reason why we wanted to do something for the children so they wouldn't go down there. And so, in the process of it, we added an addition of 24 by 24, and we added the deck, that we did the garage. Everything was done. We've had some of your, your people retire during this project phase. And what happened was, this was the last part of it. And I said to them, I was surprised, as you read the letter, the reason that was given for the denial of the permit, when it had already been approved. The only reason I came in to check was, we decided after looking, instead of using two by fours for the, 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 the new addition, that we were right at the level of the cinder blocks for the other one. So we said, "We'll just tie cinder blocks in, and I'll come up here and make the revisions on the plan." That was the only thing. And that's when I was told that, you know, it had been approved, the permit. And then I got an email later on, it says it wasn't. And so, I would like for you to consider my proposed plan to finish this up. That V shape, the, the sewer, and all of that, we found the sewer last year. We didn't know where it was. It was covered with trees and all of that. But in that time, we cleared everything out. But we still hadn't seen it. And so, I paid some gentleman to come and really clean out it, and we never cleaned out the woods, and we never saw it. And so, when he came out last year, we found it, we had the surveyor come out. There is nothing that is according to the plot plan for the sewage, the drains, and all of that, that has been stated. At the top of the house, where it's the closest, it, it's only nine feet. And, and they included the street sewer in, the drain, the, the street drain where the water goes down through, but not the sewer that we have been dealing with since 1991. And so, that was a new addition to me. And they, they told me, the gentleman said to me, when he came out, he said, "You know, you're liable for the sewer, the drain." And I said, "Well, I've never taken care of it." I said, "The township always sent people out. They always cleaned it out twice a year." And so, it just seems like I'm running through a lot of bureaucratic red tape. I've had this approved twice. And then, when I started the project, I was told it wasn't approved. So I come to the board now, and I would ask, as the last statement says on here, that you would reconsider it, you know? Nothing has changed. The sewer pipes are the same, the plan was the same as last year with Mr. Weaver, it was the same this year with Ms. Zerby, and it was approved. And I had paid for it, I had written a check out back in March, and it cleared. And to, to, to have everything done and the time involved, just to have somebody say, "Well, you know, it'll be sitting too close to the sewer pipes." The sewer pipes have never been a problem, other than when the water would come down like it did last year, those three storms washed out everything. But for the rest of it, it was intact. And I just couldn't see it. And the property, as you look at the pictures, it clears it. There's nothing else down there. And that was why Mr. Weaver said, "I don't see a problem. There's not a development back here. There's just woods. It's a big drop-off." And like I told him, I said, "This is what I have been doing and submitting to the, to the lower Paxton Township Planning Board since 1991." And when the, one gentleman retired, he came out to the house just to look at it. And he said, "Well, I retired, but I just wanted to see what you did." And it was just utilizing the property. There's nothing else you can do back there with the pond. And so, for safety and for me to do some things I want to do, this is the finish of the project for me. And I would just thank the board if they would reconsider and get back to me, one way or the other, to let me know what's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Taylor. Yeah, there's, Amanda, would you maybe bring some clarity to this? And we'll have to take some time to read through all this, because there's quite a lot of material here. But, Mrs. Zerby?
Yeah, so I don't have any of the documents in front of me, but I do remember a little bit. So there are three separate permits that were needed for his project. He needed a stormwater, a building, and a zoning. Zoning the permits, he didn't have an appropriate plot plan, so I did request more information for that before I could approve it. His zoning was approved. I believe his building was approved, and then he amended it, so that took more time. The stormwater was not able to be approved, because I believe his addition is within the sewer easement. And nothing can be constructed within a recorded sewer easement. So I think, without having the information in front of me, I think that is what the issue became and why the permit was denied. It was a stormwater issue.
So the proposed addition encroaches on the easement?
Right.
Do we know by how much?
No. I, I don't have them in front of me. I can certainly get you that information tomorrow.
Is this the, there's one, is that the storm? I mean, that's the...
Yes.
So it comes right down?
There's, there's two of them there. The one Mr. Weaver did, that has two different colors on the sheet. But what I would say to the concern just presented, the original house, before I moved in and did any work, the original house was only nine feet from the sewer. And we did not know until we did the, the land survey, that there was an area designated for sidewalk and things like that. And the way that property was, when we moved there on that steep incline, nobody from the township or anybody had a working plan for the layout of that land. That's why we have taken upon ourselves to try to correct that and to do the right thing. But if you measure, as I did when the gentleman came out here the other day, I said, "If you look at the original house to the property line, you only have nine feet. But as you go down further, it fans out. And when you get down to the bottom, where the sewer line actually is, it's over 20 feet out, that the property is nowhere near it." And you have to see, that's why Mr. Weaver came out, and that's why the other gentleman, I guess, came out. The, the property, where the line is and where the pipe is, and where I want to put the last structure on, the addition, there is 18 feet from the property line at the lower end. And as it comes up, you, you'll see the house sitting up, even been built there whenever they brought it in from old Union Deposit. I don't know how it was done, but I've always used what they gave me when I did all the renovations to the house. But right now, if you go out there and measure from the property line and the sewer line to the house, you've never had to clear it.
Okay. Reverend, what we'll do is let us get Mrs. Zerby and Mr. Weaver sort of talking together, and we'll take a look at this to see if there's any way to cure the situation. And we'll certainly take a look at, thank you for all the effort you've put into this. That's quite a lot. But give us a little bit of time?
Yes, sir.
And we'll get everybody talking to each other and see if we can find a way to make it work for you.
I appreciate that.
I can't guarantee it, but we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing no further public comment, Chairman and board member comment. Board members, do we have any comments?
I have a lot.
[laughing]
Just reminding everybody, this Sunday at Lingle Park, our Parks and Recreation Department will have the kite festival, and that will be held between 12 and 2:00. So bring your kite and your picnic lunch, and come on out. It's supposed to be 75 degrees. Mr. Zumis and myself last night attended the Council of Government meeting, and we had Ryan Unger there from Kredik, and he spoke on what the chamber is doing. Mr. Zumis and myself will be attending the PISATs Conference down in Hershey next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We were very fortunate a couple of years ago to receive a SAFER grant for our fire companies. I think it was $300,000, maybe? Okay? To help with retention for the volunteers. The Council of Government applied for a SAFER grant to help 21 fire companies out, and they did receive that SAFER grant. So they will be holding on April the 27th at 5:00 at HAC, at the John Shoemaker Building. They'll be holding a press conference there for these 21 fire companies. So if any of our firemen are listening, if you could please attend, we would appreciate it. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Any other board members?
I second what you said.
Mrs. Lindsey is our designated board member commentator, so... And that now brings us to the manager's report, Mr. Gottschall.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have no official report this evening.
Excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was so looking forward to it.
[laughing] We have no items under old business, but we do have a number of items of new business. So we will begin by taking action to adopt Resolution 22-16, designating a signatory authority for federally funded PennDOT projects. We did discuss this at our workshop last week, but are there any additional questions, board members? Seeing none, would there be a motion to adopt Resolution 22-16?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action to adopt Resolution 22-16, designating signatory authority for federally funded PennDOT projects.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We now need to take action adopting the policy and procedure for consultant selection related to federally funded PennDOT projects. Again, we have reviewed this in the past, I believe. Any questions? Mr. Gottschall, would you like to speak to it to any degree, or we're, are we all in understanding? Any questions? Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt policy and procedure for consultant selection relating to federally funded PennDOT projects as outlined on the public agenda.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This now takes us to subdivision and land development plans. First, we need to take action to approve the Cider Press master plan. This consisted with provisions of the traditional neighborhood development overlay zoning district. That's a mouthful. Who will be speaking to this? Amanda?
I will.
Thank you.
So you, before you have the master plan for Cider Press, under the requirements of the traditional neighborhood overlay district, the applicant must come before the board for approval of the master plan. Due to the existing Shadebrook TND, the Cider Press development is permitted to have a minimum lot size of 20 acres. This reduction in overall acreage is permitted, provided that the second TND is designed to be consistent with the first TND. So Cider Press must be consistent with Shadebrook, including compatible architectural standards and logical extension of streets. The proposed TND extension is not required to include commercial uses, since the adjacent TND, which is Shadebrook, has an existing commercial area. If an applicant is proposing a development within the traditional neighborhood development overlay district, the applicant is required to show the proposed streets and cartway widths, alleys, approximate lot lines, and dimensions, common open spaces, recreation areas, major pedestrian and bicycle pathways, parking areas, major detention basins, and proposed types of housing. The Cider Press master plan proposes 81 new single-family lots and has a total area of 27.7 acres situated on parcel 3566002, with a total open space proposed of 12.44 acres. The planning commission recommended approval for the master plan at the April 6th meeting. When the master plan was reviewed by staff, a determination was made that the parcel is not permitted to use the TND overlay, as the lot adjacent to Shadebrook is only 18.5 acres and not the required 20 acres. The additional acreage comes from land that is not currently adjacent to Shadebrook and not zoned TND. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the master plan, with the condition that the applicant move forward with a MAP amendment to add lands to the TND district. There are several representatives for the master plan here this evening that I think would like to speak to the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could first, I will not be engaging in any of the conversation, and I will be abstaining from voting, because it touches my property.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsey. We'll note that in a minute. Gentlemen, whoever would like to speak, if you would come to the podium and give us your name and affiliation and address and all those good things.
My name is Jared Sawyer, partner in Mission Land Company, developer of this tract. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is start with, just tell me a little bit about our development, why it was recommended to be approved, and then, this is Stan Luskowski, my attorney from Caldwell &amp; Kearns. He would like to talk to the, our arguments, why we believe it is good as is, without a, needing a MAP amendment. If that's okay?
Okay. Please lean a little bit closer into the microphone so that we can...
So we're proposing 81 single-family units as an extension of Shadebrook TND on 27 acres split by Cider Press Road. We're proposing two new streets and two alleys, as well as improvements and widening of Cider Press Road. We worked with the planning commission to locate the rec areas, where they thought they would be most utilized. We actually came back and moved around some of the rec areas. We, when you enter off of Cider Press, we have a small park with a pavilion and benches. We also have walking trails interconnecting the development and the open space. On the eastern tract, the weird, kind of the weird-shaped part, the eastern part of the tract, we're proposing a nine-acre natural area and walking trail along Nye's Run, which can be accessed by a parking area. All of our garages will be side or rear-loaded. We'll work with the proper authorities in regards to all utilities during the preliminary plan stage. And then, also at the last planning commission meeting, there was some concerns voiced by residents on potential traffic issues and separation of the walking trail in the rear yards of the homes on, along Overview Lane. To address these concerns, we're forming a traffic study that will study the intersection of Cider Press and Union Deposit, as well as Cider Press and Fairmont, as well as proposing a black aluminum fence along the walking trail, which will be on the preliminary plan. That is... This area was backed up to Overview Lane. That's about it. Any questions for me? Any comments to me?
When's this traffic study to be completed?
It'll be completed along with the preliminary plan.
I believe the other gentleman is going to make some comments also.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. With respect to the issue about the acreage for the property that was pointed out by staff this evening, I'd like you to take into consideration the language as it's worded in the statute and, excuse me, in your ordinance. Section 314B2 provides a unique set of circumstances. This property, as it's, currently exists, provides a unique set of circumstances here that need to be taken into consideration when applying that ordinance. First, it says you have to have 80 acres, and that's been done, okay, with the adjoining Shadebrook development. So there's no question about that. And then, the ordinance says under 314B2, it says that an adjacent tract, notice it uses the word tract there, it doesn't say lot, okay? It says tract. And then it says, "A tract may have a minimum size of 20 acres." Okay? Must have that. And it's consistent. So I'll leave the consistency issues to Mr. Sawyer here and whatnot. I believe he can certainly answer those. The ordinance doesn't stop there. It goes on to define tract size. Okay? Now, tract and tract size are not defined anywhere else in the ordinance, in the zoning ordinance or otherwise. It's not defined under the MPC. It's not defined under the SALDO. So your definition of tract size is right here, under section 314P2. And it says that that tract size shall include, not, it's mandatory, shall include all that lot area of all the lots prior to subdivision and land development, of course deleting the area with regard to existing rights of way. Okay? This is one single parcel. It is not two parcels. It has one parcel number for all the area that you see there, both on either side and down below, where the additional walking trails are, which is on the next slide, I believe. Yeah, maybe even the third one. Ah, there it is, there. That's the whole project. So that entire area down below, which is not developable, I mean, you can't put really anything in there with regard to the TND, and Mr. Sawyer can speak further to that. It is of note also that everything in all the housing development that's going on within the TND is taking place within the area which is zoned, and the zone line is for the TND. The area that is below that, okay, that's open, is basically going to be public, you know, walking trails and for additional recreational uses associated with that, because it is still part of, and a piece of, the initial property and the same property that's there. We believe this meets all of the requirements. The ordinance does say that you may request, okay, that the MAP be amended. It speaks in terms of the land, and it says if you... It speaks in terms of, uh, the land, and it says if you find the land area, isn't included, you can ask. But if you look at, we don't have a bigger picture up here, of the entire TND develop, uh, area and the zone, uh, that's involved, there are adjoining properties on either side. This property is unique in the sense that it is the only one, like this shape, but it is the only one that extends outside of that existing TND zone. So I, I don't believe that under the ordinance, there's a, a requirement for this. I believe it's permissive, and I think it was intended to acknowledge and encourage the growth of the TND district when you come across something that's, uh, a bit unusual. This is part of the same tract. Uh, under the municipality's planning code, um, if, uh, the section six oh three, Point Run provides that, um, when you're interpreting an ordinance, okay, deference has to be given, and a broad reading of that ordinance has to be provided under the circumstances. Uh, the language, it's required to be interpreted when there is any doubt that exists under the circumstance that the, uh, with regard to the intended meaning, uh, of, uh, this ordinance, uh, then it must be interpreted in favor of the property owner. Now, I don't believe it was intended to exclude a portion of a tract or to de facto subdivide that tract under the circumstances to preclude one type of development versus another because it is all part of the same tract, and that all was known at the time that the TND zone was created. I guess you'd have to ask, what else can we do with that piece down there? Uh, not much, okay, other than maximizing its use for the public benefit and the walking trails, which only benefits the TND. I think there's enough leeway, uh, with regard to, uh, the plain language of section three fourteen that allows, uh, supervisors here and the township to go forward with the approval of the master plan. Uh, if you should choose that at a later time or throughout the process, you would like to add that on and officially declare it as such and amend it, that would be fine. I, but I don't think it's necessary to hold the process up at, at this point in time for it. We have a very specific timeline that we have to follow. Um, and as you know, materials, uh, labor, okay, are difficult to come by these days, and difficult to come by that are cost effective. So, um, we think for the entire project's benefit and the benefit of the community, that this is a very reasonable interpretation of section three fourteen and, uh, the section of the zoning ordinance.
The part that's off to the, our right there that is just long and narrow, is there a stream or something running through that? Is that the issue?
Yeah, this is, uh, Nyes Run.
That's Nyes Run.
And this, and from, there's a grade, there's a pretty steep grade from Cider Press down to Nyes Run. So we, we just have a parking lot up around Cider Press and then a stormwater basin there is the only thing where...
So if you took all of that into consideration, the long, narrow part by Nyes Run, the little neck that connects it, as well as where you have the development, is, all of that is still under twenty acres?
No, no, that's twenty-seven acres.
It's twenty-seven acres if you, if you include all of that land?
Right, so the zoning, the zoning district stops here, the overlay.
Oh, I see.
This is eighteen and a half, and then this is another nine acres.
But if you took the entire parcel, it's twenty-seven acres?
Correct. That is correct.
Even though it's not all within the zoning district?
Correct. That's correct. So...
That's what Stan said, all of, the whole entire development is in the overlay district, all, all homes, all, other than the, uh, that's a very odd shaped property.
All the technical requirements for the homes, the type, the construction, the roads, everything, in fact, even the recreational areas that are within there, um, are designed to, uh, be compliant with the master plan requirements. Um, certainly, uh, the area down below complements that significantly, um, and adds to it under the circumstances. It's not to be subdivided off and, and used for any other purpose, and frankly, because of Nice Creek, it doesn't really allow much for that, plus the grade coming down to it makes it very difficult to do anything with it as it is. I think the intention of the ordinance was to encourage the completion of the zone under circumstances, uh, like this and the extension, uh, of the zone. Uh, and I think this fits definitely within the purpose and spirit of the TND zone and what you want to accomplish here. So I think a broad reading of the, uh, section three fourteen is in order here and appropriate to approve the master plan.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Well, this is a pretty narrow legal question we're being asked. Um, we're being asked to parse the, you know, the terminology of our governing documents. I think the solicitor should help us out here, or what?
I was going to ask the same question. You agree with those interpretations of three fourteen?
Uh, not exactly, no. I, I mean, I've had conversations with the, uh, subdivision and land development staff about it, and, um, we believe that the MAP amendment way is better than trying to do an interpretation because if the zoning officer tries to do an interpretation, he may well make, and I think he would make, an interpretation that go, that is opposite of what the applicant has determined. And, and if that happens, and, and then the applicant has to appeal the zoning officer's determination, that's going to take even longer to do that. Uh, and then if the zoning hearing board doesn't agree with the applicant, it'll, it'll even take longer. So actually, the MAP amendment would be faster than doing it the way, as suggested by the applicant.
How long, how long of a timeline is there for a MAP amendment?
Actually, it doesn't take very long. The, the application would come in, and then the, the staff would, uh, send it off to both planning commissions. Basically, the, uh, the procedure you've been through a number of times.
It's forty-five, and it's forty-five days from the time we receive it. It...
Forty-five.
Right.
I, I did work with, uh, Nick on this, and we should be able to have it in by the June sixteenth, um, Supervisors Meeting. It would have passed this time.
It would go to the June PC meeting, and then it would be before you, the second business meeting of June.
Right.
The MAP amendment.
So if, if that is what you decide, if we could, we would ask that we could run it, uh, run our preliminary plan, be able to submit our preliminary plan still on June first, have this conditionally approved and be able to, as, for that, waiting on that zoning MAP amendment, and still be able to submit our preliminary plan.
Do you see any problem with that?
No, it's good.
Well, uh, from, from my point of view, I, I think that we should follow what, uh, has been outlined here by, uh, Mrs. Herbie and Mr. Stein, and, you know, you can proceed with the other components so they can run concurrently to try to not hold you up. Uh, I don't know if other Board Members might have other views, so...
I agree.
So if that be the case, um, would it be appropriate to table this action?
We, we're...
Fine.
I, I think you can, you can take action on it, and then it would just be conditioned on, um, going through with, with the MAP amendment.
With the MAP amendment, okay. So approval conditioned upon the MAP amendment?
Right.
Okay. Uh, would any member of the board like to make that motion?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the Cider Press Master Plan consistent with the provisions of the traditional neighborhood development overlay zoning district conditional on the MAP amendment.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll have a roll call vote, uh, if we can.
Abstaining.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Dun?
Aye.
Chairman Henry?
Aye. Okay. So it is approved with the one condition, and, uh, you can proceed running everything concurrently to move things along.
Perfect, thank you for time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we also now need to take action on ordinance twenty-one dash oh three, amending chapter two oh three of the codified ordinances permitting, uh, convey, permitting a conveyorized car wash within the RRD zoning district, and that requires a hearing, which I'll turn this over to Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a time and date set for the public hearing for action on ordinance twenty-one dash zero three, which would amend chapter two oh three of the codified ordinances permitting conveyorized car washes within the RRD zoning district. Mrs. Herbie, I understand that the, the applicant has requested a continuance for the hearing?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and, uh, do you, do you know why that, that was requested?
They want to go back before the PC, before they move forward to the board.
Okay, and I believe the applicant also requested that it be continued until the May tenth meeting, is that right?
Correct.
Of the Board of Supervisors?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard at all in this, uh, Seeing none, and Mr. Chairman, it would be in order at this time to close the public hearing, and, uh, the board should take action to continue, uh, the, uh, public hearing until the May tenth Board of Supervisors Meeting at seven PM.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing to May tenth?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we continue the hearing, uh, involving action on ordinance twenty-one oh three, amending chapter two oh three of the codified ordinances permitting conveyorized car washes within the RRD zoning district.
To May tenth?
To May tenth, meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Stein. And this now takes us to improvement guarantees. We have six of those, which appear to all be fairly routine. Any questions? Would there be a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the improvement guarantees, Autumn Oaks Phase One, Deven Woods, Autumn Ridge Phase Two and Three, Mindy Meadows Phase Two, Huntley Phase One, and Maiden Creek.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
This takes us to the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any further announcements from the board or our Township Manager or Assistant Manager? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we will not be here next week, but we will be back on May, where are we? May third?
May third.
Tuesday, May third, at seven PM.
And there will be a Township Authority meeting in this room next week at seven.
Okay, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.